This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for the Town of Monroe. It is April 28, 2021, and the time is 7:03 PM. I'd like to take a roll call. The members of the commission staff present during tonight's remote meeting. Please enter here, President, starting with myself, Keith Romano. Lois Spencer is our Vice Chair and Secretary.
Here.
Jim Stewart, who is a licensed surveyor and engineer in the state of Connecticut, and also our treasurer.
Here.
Clark Gingrich.
Here.
Ross Mastaraco.
Here.
And BJ Hall.
Here.
Denise Halsted, our Inland Wetlands agent.
Here.
Donna Suzinski, our office manager.
Here.
And Sarah Stroud, our recording secretary.
Here.
Oh, there she is. Okay, before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inland Wetlands' mission statement, the objective and purpose of the Inland Wetlands Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands of watercourses within the town of Monroe. Meeting procedure. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. Due to remote meeting status, I'd like to ask the applicant's presentation as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. Meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments you've made to the chair or commission, after any and all comments pro and opposition of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Again, due to remote meeting status, please keep comments or questions direct and a timely three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally under best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetlands related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. Meeting files are published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda? Denise, you're muted.
Sorry. I don't know if Donna has all the ones that I have, but under G, Agent Approvals, I have IAA 2021-15, 54 Pastors Walk. Under E11 Discussion, we no longer have 163 Barn Hill, but I have some other ones that, if time permits, I'd like to discuss. And under remediation submission, under 8, IWR 2020-02, 224 Guinea Road. Apparently, progress has been made still by their attorney, so I think it's being tabled again tonight.
Okay.
Sorry, I know I skipped around, sorry.
That's all right. Anything else?
Not on plan. I don't know if Donna has something. I'm trying to get her.
All right.
I have nothing.
Let us begin. Right now, it's the general public participation part of the meeting. A period of time is reserved for public participation. If you have anything you'd like to address the commission about on a matter that's not currently before us or that will be before us in the near future, please speak. All right, doesn't look like anybody. Good. Regulated activities, subdivision report, recommendations to P and Z, none. Five regular meetings, none. Public hearing, IWC 2021-04, 5 Victoria Drive, proposed athletic field, building, and parking.
Good evening, members of the commission. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know if they had to read any notices or anything to start, but if not, I can certainly get going. Okay. So, sure. Denise, or excuse me, Denise or Donna, I'm not sure if you can make me presenter. I could share my screen.
Can, and I just, I'm sorry, I was having technical difficulties, but I'm back now and I can hear you all. So, I just wanted to say that we did receive an electronic submission from Kevin per my request, rather than paper copies, that he is going to go over with you this evening. It is an exhibit. It's up on the website. The maps are there. You know, we're trying to make this as, we're working very hard to make this as fluid because of the go-to meetings, the remote meetings. I know that we can't get some submissions to the commission. So, we're working together, so I just wanted to let the commission know that Kevin will be presenting new information, but you will be getting a hard copy of it before the next meeting, okay? So, you don't have to, you know, worry about not having time to review it because you will have time to review it. I hope that's okay that I said that, Kevin.
Of course, yeah, I was going to dive into that as well when I got started and let the commission know. So, can you make me a presenter or?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, I will.
No, don't worry.
Yes, okay.
Awesome, thank you so much. So, again, for the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering. Office is located at 501 Main Street, right here in Monroe. We're here to talk about a proposed inland wetlands application for regulated activity or a building expansion at 5 Victoria Drive. As Donna mentioned, we did receive comments from both Denise and Scott. We have been working on some minor tweaks to the plan to address those comments and concerns. We haven't, we didn't formally, or we didn't want to formally submit that formal response to comments with revised plans the night of the meeting, but we were, we did incorporate some of those tweaks and changes into this plan set. So, through, as Donna mentioned, through coordinating with our office and with them, we did provide an electronic copy of just the plans, but we'll be formalizing and formalizing a response to comments and providing, you know, fully revised information based on not only staff comments, but we also wanted to see if the commission had any comments after our presentation this evening that we could also incorporate into any revised materials. So, just to orient everybody, this is an aerial in the town of Monroe. So, the site is located at the southern end of Mount Main Street. So, this is Route 25, runs north-south along the western edge of town. 5 Victoria Drive is just over the town line with Trumbull. Here's a little bit closer up aerial. You can see Route 25 runs north-south, and then Victoria Drive provides access off of Route 25 to the site. Here's another close-up which shows the existing facility is, this site's approximately 8.22 acres. It is currently improved with Ole Soccer. It has about 13,000 square foot industrial building, which is used for indoor recreation and an outdoor athletic field. The site is accessed off of Victoria Drive, and you can see Swiss Army is to the east. There's a large, the west branch of the Paquonic runs adjacent to the site along that easterly property line, and then around towards the rear, and there's a pond in this location here, and there are some wetlands on the site as well. The commission is familiar. In 2015, beginning of 2015, beginning of 2016, an approval was granted. Can everyone see the screen? Do you see the presentation? Okay. Okay, good, just wanted to make sure. So, an approval was granted in 2015 for the development of the property to accommodate Ole Soccer. Prior to that approval, it was used from, used by L and L Evergreen, and as part of that operation, they actually encumbered and impacted a number of wetlands throughout the property as part of our previous approval for Ole Soccer. There were a number of areas identified for both wetland and upland enhancement throughout the site. Our design has been prepared based on a lot of those enhancements that were completed, and one of the comments from Denise requested an updated wetland delineation. I can say that Jim McManus, the soil scientist, has visited the site. We actually visited the site with him and went through. This plan actually shows the blue line, which is generally consistent with the expanded wetland area, which is pretty consistent with what was previously approved, previously proposed and approved to enhance the wetlands on-site, to create some additional wetlands, and then provide some upland enhancement. Our proposed design has been prepared to avoid any direct impact, any direct wetland impact for the newly created wetlands as part of the last application. So, we haven't created any additional impact, and actually what we're proposing is to create some additional enhancement areas, and we're excited to review those with the commission tonight. So, again, back to just the aerial of showing what the existing conditions are. You can see some of those wetland areas as they kind of come through the center of the site in this location here. This is actually the created turtle pond, which we, which was constructed as part of Ole Soccer. And our office did provide some of the follow-up monitoring reports regarding the plantings done on the property. I think that should be in the overall projects or properties folder. We didn't include it in the submission for this application, but we can certainly provide that if the commission's interested. So, our proposed development includes the construction of approximately a 22,000 square foot building addition adjacent to the Ole Soccer here. The proposed intended use is for, to create an indoor box lacrosse facility. So, essentially, that's a, it's a, it's indoor lacrosse. It's played on a, in a field that's generally the same size as a hockey rink. This is somewhat, it's been in Connecticut for a while. There aren't actually any real dedicated facilities to accommodate the proposed use. And our client is the contract purchaser for the property and is looking to bring this to the town of Monroe, which is really going to serve, you know, Fairfield County and then the broader region, and they're really excited about what the additional opportunities it can bring to the town. So, we're proposing this small building expansion here. So, this is in the area that's currently improved with parking and a small portion of the existing field, which was constructed. We're incorporating some of that as part of our proposed building area. We're providing some additional circulation around the building and parking to accommodate the proposed use, and then we're reducing the size of the existing recreational field to a smaller area, which is shown here, which would be maintained. The existing site stormwater management system, we're proposing to generally maintain in its current configuration. We aren't proposing to do any modifications in here, but we are proposing to provide some surplus parking and some deferred parking towards the southern end of the site. So, this area through here, it's currently just a kind of low-line grass area, and I can go back to the aerial to see if you can see. So, we are proposing to provide some additional deferred and surplus parking in this location through here. We are proposing that to be just gravel, so a three-quarter inch clean stone surface, which could provide, provide protection for any kind of erosion or runoff or anything like that. And we're providing, we are providing that just really for surplus parking. We're confident that the parking around the facility will be adequate to accommodate the use. And I will say that the Planning and Zoning Commission recently approved a number of applications to kind of support this project. They recently changed the zone of the property from industrial to B2, and they also approved a regulation amendment to reduce the parking requirements for the, for indoor recreation, really to accommodate the proposed uses. The existing regulations, or the former regulations required six parking spaces per thousand square feet, which was far more than what these, these users actually demand. And so, they were, they granted that regulation amendment, which reduces our parking requirement. So, from an overall standpoint, the project's required a total of 142 spaces. We're proposing to construct 108 spaces with pavement and asphalt, and then an additional 42, 43 parking spaces towards the rear, which would just be again on a gravel surface to minimize any additional pervious surfaces that would need to be constructed and to minimize any other potential runoff issues associated with that. We are providing a paved access through this area to approximately this location. There's currently an existing paved access drive that's a little bit narrower that continues further into the site. We would be removing that from this point back and again providing just that surplus parking lot and with the gravel surface course. So, additionally, there are some areas, based on our wetland delineation, there are some potential areas that we could even provide additional enhancement if this commission felt so inclined. One more point to make, but I'm just going to go back to the aerial real quick. As part of the previously approved mitigation areas, there was a small drive in the back that was access that was maintained to provide additional remediation for the rear portion of the property. This was actually completed as part of another application, which came before this commission at 4 Main Street and 7180 Main Street, which is actually a property that's both in Monroe and Trumbull, but that actually has been completed. I think Denise has actually been out there to see that restoration and those wetlands to be restored. So, this project, and that was located in this location here. So, our proposed development, again, doesn't propose any other activity back there other than this gravel parking lot and allows for that to really be kind of closed out and left in its restored condition. From a grading and drainage, creating drainage standpoint, we are proposing to maintain the existing drainage system that accommodates the existing facility. We are proposing to collect the roof runoff from the proposed building expansion and route that through some underground infiltration, underground detention systems, and that, those have been sized to ensure that the, in the proposed conditions, we've actually been able to provide, reduce the peak rate of runoff for all storm events from the two-year storm all the way up to 100-year storm event. And that's, that is included in our review report and will be in the revised information submitted in the response to staff comments. Towards the rear of the site in this location here, we are proposing some additional catch basins to accommodate stormwater runoff collection behind the facilities, and that's being proposed to be routed through a hydrogenemic separator prior to discharge to one of the newly created ponds, recently created ponds as part of the previously proved wetland enhancement area. One other point that was made, or comment that was made, is we had been, we had proposed a sidewalk along this access drive towards the rear surplus parking area. We don't believe it's actually within any area that's actually been created as wetlands as part of the previous application. However, we are going to be proposing to eliminate that sidewalk, to reduce some of the activity through here. I'll say that the town engineer's comment did, would actually request or look to actually extend that all the way to this gravel lot, but I think we're going to, we're going to propose to not include that sidewalk connection back through there. I think we want to try to minimize many of the activity in between this, this narrow wetland crossing, and we think that, you know, based on intended use, you know, any pedestrian traffic that would have to come from this surplus lot can easily be accommodated within the access drive to get towards the proposed facility. We provided a soil erosion sediment control plan in accordance with the 2002 Soil Erosion Sediment Control Manual. It includes silt fence with hay bale backing around the wetland edge to ensure that sediment laden water could make its way into those natural resources, regulated areas. One other point, from a stormwater standpoint and a grading standpoint, the, there is a 100-year flood plain, which does encroach into the property. It's generally in this location here. As we are proposing building within that area, we do, we are going to be needing to provide some compensatory storage to offset the minor filling in this area to accommodate the proposed building. How we've accommodated, accomplished that is we've essentially reduced the grading towards the rear of the site where we're proposing this surplus parking, and then we were able to demonstrate that we're able to maintain the existing flood carrying capacity on the property just through some minor grading and excavation towards the rear of the site, which offsets that minor filling within the flood plain to accommodate the proposed building. Additionally, we've designed our site and graded our site so that the, while the building sits here, the, the parking lot surrounding it essentially drops in grade to minimize that amount of fill being placed in the lower layer, lower parts of the site through here. So, you kind of have some exposed foundation to again reduce, maintain or match existing grades as best, as most practical and eliminate or reduce any, any proposed fill within that flood plain. But we were able to provide compensatory storage to maintain existing flood carrying capacity, and we will have a flood permit process that we'll be going through with the town engineer and the zoning enforcement officer who actually administers those requirements. We've included a utility plan. There's, we are going to have to sprinkler the proposed building, so we are providing a fire service to the facility and an additional sewer, sanitary connection to the existing septic system. There's adequate capacity on the site to provide a minor expansion of the existing septic system, which is along Victoria Drive in this location here and outside of the regulated area. All other utility servicing the building will remain as part of the proposed expansion area. We do have a landscape plan included in our package, and we have provided, actually towards the rear of this gravel parking lot, we are proposing a very small basin adjacent to the turtle pond, which was constructed as part of the previous approval, and we are providing some extensive planting throughout that area to further enhance those upland areas and also some plantings along the eastern edge of that surplus gravel lot. Be able to maintain the rest of the landscaping around the site and then just very minor plantings and some of the islands and such around the, around the building, the proposed facility. From a lighting standpoint, we're able to essentially maintain existing lighting to the most, most extent practical. We're also providing some additional building lights around the proposed building to capture that. We do have one light pole proposed in this location here towards that rear access drive just to ensure there's adequate light levels throughout that area. So, the, that's our presentation from a, from a big picture standpoint. As I mentioned, we did receive comments from both Denise and Scott. As I indicated before, we haven't formally responded to those comments yet, but we have incorporated a number of plan changes in the set that I just presented to you. We will be providing a formal response to both those comments, and we'll be working with staff, you know, over the next week to verify that we've been able to address all their concerns. But I think what we'd like to do at this time is, is, you know, answer any questions that the commission may have and see if there's any other comments or concerns that the commission has that we can incorporate and any revised information we submit to the commission.
Okay, thank you. Start from the top as usual. Commissioner Spence, questions? We want to wait. Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, Kevin, could you discuss your various outfalls?
Outfalls?
Yes.
Sure, yeah, so.
Discharges.
So, the existing site collects stormwater through the parking lot. There's a pipe, there's drainage underneath the existing field, and there's a pipe which runs along the eastern edge of that field and discharges into this stormwater quality basin with a sediment floor bay and other basin in this location here. We're maintaining those same, that same pattern and that same discharge. So, with our proposed grading plan, we're essentially dropping a catch basin on top of that, bringing that through from our, our underground detention system, which is collecting and attenuating the roof runoff. That's being routed to a system here, which then connects into that same system. And the only other, there's, we are proposing a small collection system behind the, behind the existing proposed buildings, which would be treated with a hydrogenemic separator and then discharged into this wetland system. Overall, the Paquonic runs along this edge and then discharges into a large pond, which sits here, and then that continues south towards Trumbull. This wetland system, which is essentially along the property line between 5 Victoria and 36 Main Street to the east, there is a pipe, there's an existing pipe in Culver, which runs beneath the existing access drive and the proposed accessway here, and then this essentially collects stormwater runoff both from this wetland system through the existing stormwater discharge associated with the field, and then this essentially infiltrates stormwater and then kind of discharges via either, either surfishly or subsurfishly into the, this wetland in this pocket adjacent to the west branch of the Paquonic. So, we are essentially matching, you know, we're, with the exception of this discharge here, those are being maintained. The, oh, excuse me, we're actually, we do have a small discharge in this location as well to accommodate the underground detention system, and then for this gravel lot, we are proposing that this would just essentially be collected through this basin here, spill over a spillway into this wetland system, which again would then be conveyed underneath that existing culvert towards the east.
Okay. Your gravel overflow parking lot, that's, that's obviously not curved. It's all going to be over, overland flow, correct?
That's correct, yeah. We aren't proposing any catch basins through here. It's been, it's been designed to basically sheet flow everything towards this small basin in this location here.
And you're proposing process gravel?
We're actually, we're proposing a two-inch layer of three-quarter inch clean stone over processed. We do have a detail on our, on sheet 3.01. So, we are two inches of crushed three-quarter inch stone.
Now, if you're not, if it's not going to be used very much, it's probably going to grass over at some point, what's your plan to do to deal with that?
Well, I think that'd be kind of maintained as, as needed. You know, we are proposing a processed gravel base beneath that clean stone, so we're hoping that that can be kind of managed and maintained. I think if, if, if there is evidence of, of grass growth and things like that, it can be probably mowed or maintained, and then I think with gravel, that also makes maintenance a little bit easier because you can kind of come in and spruce that up as needed.
Okay, so you wouldn't be planning on spraying it, or would you?
I don't believe so. I don't think we'd be, we anticipate, we try to avoid trying to just rely on herbicides or anything like that, especially given the proximity to all the surrounding resources.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. Commissioner Gingrich?
No questions.
No question. Commissioner Mastaraco?
No questions.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes, in looking at this picture right, that's up right now, I'm trying to look to understand where the existing field is, the outdoor field, and in relation to the new. I think I can kind of see some border there in the gray, but if you could outline that.
So, the existing field sits here. So, we're, we're essentially taking, I'd say, maybe 60% of it to accommodate the proposed building and a portion of the parking as it wraps around that building. We are maintaining, as you can see, this, this portion of the field here.
And that would just be open space at this point or in the future?
Yes, yep. That'd be, that'd be maintained in its existing, you know, grassed area. There is a fence, there is a fence that surrounds that field, and... So, you know, this existing fence, which kind of comes along the edge of the field here, you know, we're proposing to maintain that in its current condition. You know, there was, there was some comments, it looks like a very small portion of that chain link fence is located within the floodway, and I think Scott had requested that we move that. You know, we're going to request that, that fence was installed and the ASBILT submitted and a CO granted for that fence to be maintained. We're going to, we're going to request to leave that fence as is rather than to reset it, just because, you know, the disturbance associated with that, we're going to try to avoid some of that disturbance, especially close proximity to the wetlands in that area.
Okay, good. I have no more questions. Back to Commissioner Spence.
Hi. You referenced a soils report on your letter, and we didn't get one.
So, yeah, the, the, the previously prepared soils report by Michael Klein Dunn as part of the former application was what we had included, but, but as I mentioned before, we had Jim McManus. we had Jim McManus go back out, visit the site and redeline the wetlands and actually, you know, again, which was, which I showed on one of these slides, which I can go back to. Which, which essentially kind of verified the limit of newly created wetlands is kind of consistent with where we were proposing them as part of our previous application. So, so you can kind of see on here. You know, so this, this is the newly, you know, established wetland edge, which generally follows the turtle pond and the other shallow marsh areas that we were, that was proposed as part of the O.L.A. soccer project. He is, he will be providing an updated delineation report to accompany his new delineation, which will include in our next submission to the commission.
When you say it, it varies a little bit, how much is a little bit?
Uh, very minor. So, so you can kind of see it best on, so, so this was the, you know, this was the previously approved plan and, and what it had was it had marsh areas, pond areas, and then, you know, we had some wet meadows, but then we had a lot of upland slopes. So generally, essentially, the, the toe of the slopes is what has been created and established as wetlands, which was what was the intention with the original approval. And then our proposed activity essentially, you know, where even the gravel parking area, we, we designed that in a way so that we're staying on that, on the top of that slope. We're not proposing any activities down that slope area to avoid any potential impact to any of those newly created wetland areas. And, and then towards, towards the eastern side through here, if you recall, there were some, because there was some grading done through here to kind of create some floodplain soils. Those floodplain soils, a portion of them have been, were identified by Jim as wetlands. There's a lot of good vegetation that's kind of taken root and expanded pretty well through here. But there's, you know, there's definitely still some areas kind of through here that aren't really connected, which, you know, which could be as part of this application.
When he walked it with you, maybe you might have said this and I missed it, did he flag it as you was, as you were going?
He did. Well, he, he didn't flag it, but he will be, he's gonna be completing his flagging this week, but we did walk it, we walked the toe of the slope. We, we looked at the plants and I, I'd say even this back here, there's some, there, the, the, the work that was done did a great job of creating some really nice habitats because there's some really nice birds and such kind of back through here. And this pond is, is absolutely gorgeous. You can kind of see just from the aerial. But yeah, so, so this worked really, really well. A lot of the, what we proposed before did well and we, we walked it and he's gonna be completing his flagging later this week.
I would like to walk this. I, I remember it way back when it was one big swamp around, around the lake and now, of course, it's dramatically changed and has changed many times over the last 15 years. I would like to be able to see it for real, other than just in the aerial. Is there a way we can do that?
I'm sure we, obviously with any wetland application, you know, we encourage the wetland commission to, to conduct a site walk, you know, individually or as a group. We can certainly accommodate a site walk as part of the.
That we can, so we can do this individually? Would that be okay?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, I think that's standard with any application.
All right, that sounds good. When do you expect that Jim would be able to finish his flagging? Because I would like to walk it after it's been flagged.
Um, he, we were trying to get him to finish, finish it up by this Friday. His schedule has been very strained recently, so I think probably Monday next week at the latest.
Okay. You mentioned that the fence was into the floodway, how far?
Oh, very barely. Uh, it maybe goes over two or three feet, just the corner post in this, in this location.
Sorry, could you, so show me the location again?
Sure, I'm sorry, can you see the?
Yes, I can see your.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, right here.
Okay.
Let me pull in for you.
All right. Did you or would you consider using grass pavers instead of gravel? Because that can be mown over and we wouldn't, I mean, herbicides would be the last thing I'd want to see put in this area, especially so close to the Paquonic. And pavers might be, enable it to be mown and keep it under control. And, and they also, I mean, I would go to that to, to get a gravel or gravel or pavers or something installed. I vastly approve of them over pavement. So I think it's a great idea, but just we want to have as little maintenance as possible and as little intrusion, I guess. And gravel, I, I see Jim's point, I mean, gravel can be, if it's not used a lot, it's still gonna, even if it is used a lot, it's still gonna grow up a lot of weeds and it's really hard to mow gravel, unless you have somebody back there with a weed whacker and that's kind of a big area to weed whack. So I wanted to see what you thought about grass pavers.
We can certainly review that with our client field, that'd be something he'd be willing to consider.
Okay. How, how likely do you think it is that you're gonna be able to get this through P&amp;Z without being paved?
Well, so the, the beauty of, the beauty of the Planning and Zoning Regulations is it allows for us to defer up to 25% of the required parking spaces, you know, identify them on the site plane, but defer the formal construction of that. So based on our park requirements, we're required to construct 107 spaces to meet that minimum requirement, less the deferral. So we have 108 spaces that we are proposing to pave. I think because of that and given the sensitivity to the other wetlands, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to get that through with planning and zoning because these are really the deferred parking spaces and it's kind of surplus. I think, I think the commission in general is looking to, I think with, you know, some recent changes on the commission, I think they're trying to embrace this a little bit more. You know, I think, so I'm, I'm pretty optimistic we'll be able to get that done, especially since it's, since we're, we're proposing to construct and pave more than what's required based on that parking deferment provision of the regulations.
Okay.
And I think, and I think a positive referral from this commission as a recommendation would only help support that request.
Okay. Well, I'm looking forward to seeing the new plans. I weren't aware that they were online or I would have tried to, to look at them a little bit, so I have, I mean, other than what you have up on the screen, which is about this big, um, I can't, you know, I can't really see it too well. So I will defer further questions until I get a chance to really examine those, those plans.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Spence. Kevin, from me, so what constitutes the auxiliary parking use? Like, is that gonna be considered a daily or special event where, you know, there's more than what's normally occupied for cars?
Yeah, so, so we would envision that that would only be utilized on a very infrequent basis, you know, if they were hosting a tournament or something like that. The, the contract purchaser of the property actually is part of a consortium that recently purchased the professional lacrosse team that was, that used to be based at Mohegan Sun and he actually purchased them and relocated them to the Albany area in Albany, New York. There very well may be opportunities for exhibition games to be played here by that professional team. If that were to take place, there may be, there may be a need for some of that surplus parking. Box lacrosse, again, is, is similar to like hockey in that there's five people on a team. So there may be some tournaments held here, you know, on a, on an occasional weekend. And I think if there was a tournament taking place, there may be the need for some of that surplus parking, but it would really be infrequently and not during kind of day-to-day or normal operations.
And to expand on what Commissioner Spence had suggested, I've seen places where, isn't there, well, shouldn't say I've seen, but I've been there. Is there a way to do like a mix where there's actually some organics in there and actually do grow like a, like a grass on it? So it's like more of a grass field, but it's structurally gonna hold up to cars? So that, like I said, it's less, a less maintenance issue, probably, you know, less to maintain over, over time.
Yeah, we can look at that, we can look at that, because there, there are some, there's some other, there's some other options, obviously, other than, other than grass pavers. There's also some, you know, reinforced, you know, plastic honeycomb reinforcement that can be put in with, you know, put in with, with soil that can grow grass, but it can be structurally sound to accommodate vehicular traffic for parking lots and things like that or access ways. So we could look at, we'll, we'll, we'll work with our client and look at some, you know, other potential options that we could possibly consider there.
I'm even thinking easier than that. I thought there was a mix, way to mix like stone and soil. So you're not using, you're not laying down the honeycomb or the pavers and it's, you know, it kind of rolls out, but it still supports grass, not like a flush lawn, but it, you know, it will be veg, it'd be vegetation versus just gravel.
We can look at that.
That's it for me, anybody else? Anything else they want to say, raise your hand, Commissioner Spence?
I thought of one other thing. If the sidewalk is required by P&amp;Z, that would be a good, keeping that to be pervious would be a good way to not have to worry about shoveling it in the wintertime and maintaining it that way, because as it melts, it drains right out and it doesn't ice over the same way. So with the grass pavers or, I don't know anything about what Keith was talking about, so I couldn't really say, but I do know that the, the plastic grid sounds great. Anything that creates a secure footing for the, for the cars and that allows grass to grow, which is really ecologically more healthy and can be maintained, I think that would be a good idea. One more question, were all of the wetlands that were created, were they marked on the plan, on your new plan, as wetlands or are they all, or are some of them grade out?
So the, the new delineation is not depicted on these plans? That was one of the comments from staff and that's something that we're, that, that we're gonna be incorporating into our revised plans once we get, once the delineation is completed and we're able to survey those. But again, you can actually, let me pull up a different app here. No, let me stick to this. The, I think if you look at the plans, you can kind of see where the toe of the slope is. And the toe of the slope is essentially kind of where those wetlands were established. So that'll be, I, I think in the revised submission, that'll come post, post survey, picking up those new flags. That'll better, more clearly depict where that actually established wetland is and that where our activity is actually outside of those areas.
When you mentioned toe of slope, where? What toe of slope? What toe of slope?
Toe, toe of slope along those areas that were expanded as part of the previous application. So, so this wetland system through here, you know, there was some extensive grading done to construct this turtle pond and you can see the contours along this area. So the toe of this slope is kind of the limit of wetland and then we just have basically some, some sloping up to that, to that level landing where that exists out there today. Same thing along here, so there was some excavation created to create like a shallow marsh area here and then there's a, there's, there's a slope as you go back up towards existing grade. So the toe of those slopes adjacent to these wetlands really kind of capture where those wetlands were expanded upon from the previous delineation.
Okay. All right, I look forward to the new plans.
Commissioner Stewart, you, thank you, Commissioner Spence. Commissioner Stewart, you want to say something else?
Yeah, Kevin, you have, you have in your planting plan a lot of transplanting trees. I can't see what they're, what they're gonna be, where they're from, what their size is.
They'd all, they'd all be transplanted from the site. There were a number of trees, pulled up the landscape plan, there are a number of trees, like within the parking fields, which were planted as part of the previous approval, that we're gonna try to relocate on site to, you know, minimize the, the new plant, plantings required as part of this. So, so those are the ones that we'd be relocating and those were, you know, those were installed in accordance with the requirements at the time, so they've only grown over the past three, four, or five years since planting.
Okay. Okay, so can you, can you put those, those types on there or the general types that they are, so we, we know what, what they, what they may be?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call that out specifically. It should be, it should be labeled on the landscape plan, but I'll make sure that it is.
All right, thank you.
So there's, yep.
Yeah, just to say that they're, they're, they're from the site or some sort of note that tells us, you know, you're just not gonna go in the woods and, and dig out some, some weird stuff and stick it along the parking lot.
Poaching. Yep.
All right, thank you. I'll, now canvas the public, see if anybody has any, does anybody in the public like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody want to speak in opposition to this application? Does anybody want to speak about this application in general nature? All right, now, next, do we have any, well, Kevin, you all set with your, you're gonna wrap up or? Are you wrapped up?
Yeah, no, I, I believe, no, I think so, yeah. We're, as I said, we, you know, we, we provided a copy of the plan to the office today to make sure that what we were showing was, was on, on file. We're gonna be providing further revised plans, which obviously incorporate Jim McManus' updated delineation with an updated survey and some other minor tweaks based on our conversations tonight. And we'll go back and we'll look at that, that surplus parking lot and see what we can come up with, if there's an alternative way we can handle that rather than just gravel. And we'll be incorporating that into the revised information as well.
All right, thank you. We have any exhibits to enter to the record?
Yep. Exhibit one was inland wetland agent comments by Denise Halsted. The document was due March 31st. Also photos of existing conditions by Denise Halsted. Document, oh my God, Halsted. November 7th, 2018. A copy of the approved wetland restoration map by Solly Engineering submitted by Denise Halsted. The document was dated December 16th, 2015 and a revision date of February 11th, 2016. Exhibit four were town engineer comments from Scott Schatzlein. The document was dated April 6th, 2020. And exhibit number five was the electronic submission of a revised plan set by Solly Engineering. I have the receipt date as of today. And that's it.
So now, is this, this thing open?
Yes. Yeah, so it'll just be continued to the next meeting, which is May something or other.
Right, so we'll be continuing.
May 12th.
May 12th. The continuing IWC-2021-04 till May 12th.
Thank you.
Senator, thank you. Now I'll have to see enforcement, just excuse me for a second.
Okay.
Okay, I'm back. And it'll be discussion, IWB 2021-01, 90 Topaz Lane Yard previously extended into upland review area.
I have the homeowners on the, I see them present, so I don't know if you want me to give an overview and then they could chime in or you want them to talk?
Give us the overview first, Denise.
Donna, could you put up 90 Topaz for me? And then John, I'll give you the, the floor after I let the commission know. Around the jump divots, I have it under NOV. Okay. Whoops. No, that's, I don't have control yet, okay. If you could go to the, I think it's the third page. No, that's, I don't have control yet. Okay. If you could go to the, I think it's the third page, Donna. It's the drawing with the aerial behind it and colored.
Okay Denise, you should have the con. You should have control now.
Okay, let's see. Why is it not letting me? Here we go. Okay. There we go. That's what I'm trying to put on the screen. Okay. So this violation came as a complaint from several neighbors. I'm assuming neighbors will go with that. It's just anonymous people. They were saying that activity was going on in the back wetlands area. There was ATVs being driven on the property and the wetlands on their property, on adjacent properties, yada, yada. So I did not have, I did not do access to the property because it was a complaint and I didn't have permission to be on someone else's property. Based on the aerial, you'll see this yellow line here, which was the approved limit of disturbance. Now, the current homeowner bought the house, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, John, in 2007. Looking at, pardon? Okay. Looking through the aerials, it appears that this, the yard was extended prior to the current homeowners owning the property. Back to where the tree line is now. And a wall, an unpermitted wall, we couldn't find any permit in the records in the building department, was built that leads down to this lower area. So I sent a letter to John and his wife, just kind of letting them know that there's potential violation. They did not do the clearing. This was how it was back in 2006. But I asked him to please join online as we try to get this figured out. The green here is the limit of wetlands that was flagged when the house was constructed back in 1998 or something, I guess, or 2000. So obviously the previous homeowner had cleared beyond the limit of disturbance and into the wetlands area. So I am going to let the property owners talk a little bit so the commission could kind of understand. I think that was basically the history of it and how you want things to be handled.
All right. Well, thanks Diane. As you mentioned, we purchased the property.
Right.
Okay. So as you mentioned, we.
You state your name and your address for the record, please.
John Neeheads, 90 Topaz Lane.
Thank you.
So again, we purchased the property in 2007 and basically as it is today. Seems as though the neighbor to our left there in this image has had issue with it ever since it was done. He complained to me the first time I met him about it. I believe he lodged a complaint back in about five years ago. You guys actually came out and took a look at the property at the time. And now he's, I guess, up to it again. So we would have not purchased the property had we known the backyard work was done without permits. Quite honestly, I'm surprised that they were done without permits because I was told that he spent a tremendous amount of money in clearing the property and having the walls built. At this point, we, you know, simply want to get it resolved. So looking for your direction on how to make that happen.
Let me interject for a second Keith. John is correct. I did some further digging and I guess back in 2016, I guess there was somebody from the office that did go out and take a look because I guess the same complainant must have called. And they looked, but the file just kind of sat here.
Okay. My question is, what, what about the activities? What, you, I think you mentioned that Denise in the beginning about some activities.
The neighbor complaining that they use ATVs in the wetlands and they drive back there and on several different properties. But that's, that's the calls that I keep getting. And I'm like, people, I'm not here on the weekend. I'm not out there. You have a prom and you say someone's on your property, then call the police. I don't know what they want out of them.
Yep. So do you guys own ATVs that you drive around the property?
My daughter has, yes, a go-kart. My daughters have a go-kart that they have driven around, you know, the property in the backyard. Over the winter when it was frozen, they did go out there on one or two occasions. I can also tell you that I've also seen motorcycles out there, quads. I saw a snowmobile out there this winter as well. So there's people that have been back there riding through the woods.
Yeah, there's a good amount of woods back there. So I could see that.
Yeah, I've gone off of, you know, outside of the window of our property, so to speak, what I would consider, you know, the width of our backyard, you know, but kids have gone back there. They're daughters, you know, we try to get them outside. COVID thing, it's been a mess. You know, my sister-in-law gave us a go-kart. So tried to get them on it, tried to get them out there.
Okay. So Denise, quickly, the walls are holding up the yard that's the approved grading?
So there are wall, there, there's existing walls right where the limited disturbance is. The septic system, as you could see, is right in front of it. And it used to kind of be gently sloping and it looks like the walls, because I was trying, like I said, I was trying to do by aerial. It looked like there are several steps. So, I mean, the walls could be two and a half to three feet maybe, which might be why permits weren't, nobody thought of getting permits.
Yeah.
They wouldn't need it from building department for that, but it should have been a zoning issue.
So the walls are, are holding up the yard against the side, the south side of the delineate or, or holding back fill? I mean.
Well, it's just.
You think they did a cotton fill to level the backyard?
They didn't, they may, well, they may have done a little bit, but the septic system is right here Keith. So the wall basically is holding what the existing grade was and then it goes down a little bit. So I think they, you know, maybe a little bit in this area may have been pulled apart, you know, for regrading so that they could get a, a more gentle slope down here because there are several steps that go down. If you look at one of the.
Yeah. So, so you think these walls are put in to hold back the, the backyard, the, the, the grass area or, or the area that's not in pink? So that they did like a cotton fill? Because that could have a septic implication.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, and I, you know, it, it could. You know, this, obviously the septic was in before the walls were. So I don't know. Because they didn't do it and nobody has any record of how it was done, you know, but they don't have any septic issues. Because I did ask, right? You know, so there's no, there seems to be no septic issues.
No, I don't think they have issues, but it could become a compliance issue because amount of grading behind a, a septic system, you know, can't be eventually left. I don't know, maybe Commissioner Stewart could, could talk more on that than I, but the, okay, I mean, I think I see what happened here and I mean.
In this, this area has been maintained. I mean, I'm thinking more of, you know, they, the previous homeowner kind of did a little bit in the wetland. So, you know, I, as I said to the Neeheads, if I, oh, I said that right. You know, there may have to be some work done here, but whether you would require them to, you know, the lawns.
You think fill was brought into the wetlands area?
No.
Okay. All right. Then that's.
Definitely no. Yeah, it's, it's just, you know, it was wooded and now it's cleared. It's been won. And like they said, they wouldn't have bought the property if they hadn't known.
Yeah. Well, that's easier to fix than fill in the wetlands. That's for sure.
Yeah, no, there's, there's no fill because I.
There's a tree right there in the middle of the yard Denise.
Right here. It looks like it, let me go to a different photo for you. Hold on. Bear with me because my computer is now being honorary.
Oh wait, you sent us these, didn't you?
Yeah, you should have a packet of them. So yeah, on, on this photo here, which is one of the areas, you could kind of see, you can see the walls a little bit clearer. They're like terraced and then it comes down. There was a tree here. I don't know if the tree is still there anymore.
Oh yeah, it's still there.
Okay.
Still there. Denise, do you think that tree was there when they built the house?
It may have been because here, let me go further back. Let me go further back. 13. That was when it was built. Oh, I don't have any further back. Oh, I couldn't go any further back.
What year is this picture? What year is that picture right there?
This is 2006 and that was when it was done.
The year before they bought it.
Yes.
So that tree looks pretty big.
Yes, that's why I feel it was an existing tree.
That tree is sitting in an original grade?
Yes.
Okay. So realistically, there wasn't a whole lot of activity that was done.
No.
Regrading.
Really wasn't much, right. There really wasn't much in terms of regrading. All they did is they just tried to step this a little bit, just in this little bit of area. Wetlands is down here. So.
Okay. Sorry. What was the last name again? John, John, anything else you want to mention to, you know, I don't know if I had stepped in while you were still speaking, but anything else you want to, you know, mention to the commission before we, we start discussing it?
I really don't know.
All right. Why don't we just go through and get some comments from the commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Spence.
I was, excuse me, now that this has been brought to light and spoken about in public, perhaps if Denise could gain access to the property and walk it and, because there really isn't anything as good as seeing it up close. We wouldn't have to conjecture about the height of the walls and where the wetlands is or how much fill there is and that kind of thing. It, you know, a firsthand sight is the best thing of all. So if Denise could see it and report back to us next time, we'd have a whole lot more information to go on. Because right now, but those, those walls look relatively high to me and, but I don't really know. So I would like to, you know, have somebody tell me and have Denise, because Denise has a good eye. She knows what she's looking at. She's done this a long time. So she could have a very good opinion of what's going on. And that's pretty much my, my commentary for now because I don't have enough information otherwise.
Commissioner Stewart?
I guess I would agree with Lois, but I'm, I'm leaning towards, you know, if they're willing to put wetlands markers along the wall and, and stop maintaining the, the, the grass area. I think that's good enough unless they want to come back and propose a permit for, for the improvements.
I don't understand. Stop maintaining? You mean stop mowing the grass?
Yes.
Well, I could tell you it's up, I mean, I'll speak for the, the commission. You're going to have to stop doing anything in the wetlands. That's, that's going to be, that's, that's a guarantee. I don't think anybody here is going to let you say you can continue to, to operate in the wetlands. And the other part, I think, is where the very, where, where we're going to be in negotiation, so to speak. Let me just add, I just look at this 2006 picture again. I want to ask if some of this stuff is currently here. I see it looks like a trampoline.
That 2006 was prior to us owning the property. It's no longer.
There's no longer, what about, looks like a gravel path around the perimeter?
Yes, that's still there.
Okay. And then over to the, I guess, closest to the property line, your face in the house, to the left, that opposite driveway, looks like there's some kind of, like the corners cut off by something that's white in this picture?
Denise, can you show me the same picture he's looking at?
You're looking at the 2006, right Keith?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
So it looks like the, you can see the path, the gravel path going around the perimeter, then on the left side, upper, no, other, opposite side. Something like, yeah, what's that?
That was more gravel. It's somewhat dissipated over the years. I haven't maintained it very much, but that was more gravel.
Okay. All right.
We haven't done anything back there.
Okay. So let me continue on with the commissioners so they can all have a chance to speak. Commissioner Gingrich?
Yeah, I mean, basically I know that they're going to have to, you know, stop all activity back there. Like gravel though is, it's still there though. It's a good path still all the way around?
It is.
That's a big, that's a big no, no, no. I'm kind of, I'm in favor of what Jim was saying, but you're going to have to probably, you know, let it go to nature. Because that's what happens when you, you step into the wetlands. Those, that tree is still there though, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other trees still planted that are still growing?
Yes, where you, if you can see where the.
I mean, this picture in 2006 shows, looks like four or five.
Yeah, they're still there. Yes.
And one of the, one of the other things is your activities back there. I know you're, he's accusing you of ATV, ATV driving. The go-kart, the go-kart's going to be a no-no. Stay out of the wetlands. You're not supposed to be.
In the winter when everything was dead, you know, road throes all frozen, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's the other thing. You're going to have to stay away from that. That could be anybody in your whole neighborhood, you know, driving through with motorcycles, ATVs, whatever.
The reality of it is, I heard people out there as recently as this past weekend. So it's, you know, it's going on back there quite often.
All right.
By our neighbor over this thing. I mean, it's really.
Commissioner Gingrich, is that all?
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners Ron Masaraco.
To stay consistent with what we've done with other people, we've kind of asked people to naturalize it. Put some plant material back there you'd normally find in wetlands. But it's a shame that the walkway is there, but to get rid of that gravel path, you would probably need equipment. So it's probably left best to just leave that. Maybe that area around the tree.
Sorry.
You know? But that's what I would be in favor of. Maybe naturalizing it with some plant material that you would normally find in wetlands. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Masaraco. Commissioner Hall?
Yes, I, I think I concur with the other commissioners here. I, I would be interested in seeing this same map after Denise has been able to go out and, and maybe draw a little more specific for us. So a picture of what's out there, but I think it's got to be naturalized.
All right.
Can I ask a question? When everyone keeps saying naturalize, are you, because I, I'm trying to help so that the homeowner understands. You saying naturalize the entire backyard or you're just talking in the wetlands?
I think that's, Denise, let me just, I think that's, that's going to be a discussion point.
Okay.
I think before we get, I mean, everybody has basically expressed the same thing. It's consistent what we do across the boards.
Right.
The question is, we have two things here. We have an actual upland review area and we have an actual wetlands. Both of them have been impacted, right? So I think there's, I think that we need, I think Denise and the, you and the, and, and the homeowner needs to take a couple of steps before we really get into the nitty gritty here. Now we have, I guess, I should say there's two options. I'll ask the commission what they'd rather do. We could sit here and we could negotiate something with them, so to speak. I say negotiate, but you know, figure out a remediation right now on the spot. Or Denise walks it and we give the homeowner an option of, of doing a plan, right? That we could approve or we have another meeting and we hash it out. It's, I feel like it's, it's a hard one to do with not something on paper because it's kind of vast. It kind of, you know, it's kind of a lot going on there. But I'm going to leave it up to you guys, but you know, I, we can start, I don't want to give them any more suggestions until we have the clear picture and we choose a path of how we want to handle this one. Do you want to have a formal application with, with plans and maps? They could write, they could do them themselves. So I'm not saying they have to hire anybody. This wetlands marking is on a, on a plan. It doesn't need to be determined or anything, right? And so that's, if you guys understand my question. So I'll go ahead and we'll just, I'll go through all the commissioners again and you just, you just, you tell us what you think, how you want to handle it. We'll start with Commissioner Spence.
And there's a hot seat. Um, I, first of all, I would like to have Denise walk it and at least give us, you know, the delineation of the wetland may not be that easy. you know, the delineation of the wetland may not be that easy to see. It isn't on the pictures. So it may have kind of taken on the same attributes as the upland review. So, you know, separating the two may be more difficult than it appears. Until Denise, Denise may be able to determine that, you know, oh, yeah, definitely this got muddy right here, you know, that that kind of thing is easy without going through the expense of a soil scientist, which hopefully we'll be able to avoid. Yes, I would like to see some remediation in the wetland if it is, if it is damaged, which it probably is since it's been maintained, and probably some kind of a physical delineation with some upland review area, not the whole upland area, but part of the upland review area to remain naturalized to protect the wetlands itself, but to leave a little bit of the upland review area for the homeowner to use. He doesn't have much backyard, except for whatever's over the septic system. So if it were me, I would like a little bit more backyard. So that's, that's my thought. I don't know if that's going down the path that you wanted me to, Keith?
I want to, I want to know whether you want, obviously, you're saying you're in favor of Denise. Before we finish this thing off, Denise comes out and look at it. And also, you know, there's also the possibility that commissioners may want to also be able to.
Absolutely.
But do you want, we, like we've done in the past, we can, we can give him directions in a meeting, right? Or we could have them present us with a plan of their own, right? How they want to see it done and we got to prove it. So there's one or two ways we could do it. We kind of sit here hashed out like we've done. Or or they could, they could present us with an application for, you know, restoration, so to speak. So which way would you rather do it? Is my question.
Do it so that we see it first and then come up, help them with the plan.
All right, so so informally, more like in a meeting like this?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Stewart, same question.
Yeah, I'm still, you know, I mean, if they, if they I'm still at the wetlands markers on the retaining wall. I mean, that's where the, that's where the approval was. And and stop maintaining the backyard. That would be a way that they, once it's looked at by Denise and there's nothing really weird going on, that's a way that they could in my opinion, they can get away without having to do a lot of work. If they want to continue to use that backyard, then I think they're gonna have to, have to have a plan put together.
So you rather, do you rather, like hashed out in a regular meet, a meeting, or you want them to do an application?
It's gonna be up to them. If they say, no, we want a backyard, then then I think they're gonna have to come up with a plan.
Okay.
If they want to accept, they want to accept.
Rather see a plan. You'd rather see a plan.
No, I'm, I'm leaving it up to them. If they want, if they want.
We gotta give them a direction.
Then I want to see a plan. If they're willing, I don't need to see a plan.
Commissioner, we have to tell them what we want. So.
I thought I just did.
Okay, I think so. All right. Commissioner, sorry, where am I? Gingrich?
I'm with Lois. I'd like to have Denise walk this, so I, like, we know more about what's there. Because the pictures don't really show much. Before I can make a real decision, but I don't see, you know, it needs a full application. I know.
All right, so you think we could do it in a kind of just a regular meeting setting like we are now?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall, Masaraco, sorry. There's no irrigation in there, right?
No.
I'm sorry?
No sprinkler system?
No.
All right, I'm all for just keeping it simple. Let's check it out. That's all. Commissioner Hall?
I'm, I'm with Lois on this one.
Which?
Keep it simple. We go out.
Simple, yeah. Simple, okay. I I'm in favor of it too, but what I want to, I'm sorry, Denise, were you gonna say something else?
No, no.
Okay, I just want to, what I want to tell the homeowner, in my, my, my opinion and in this situation, because it's, I think it's a little bit on the trickier side. If if we do this in a meeting, right, we're gonna be kind of like working things out. And you could set a sense from, from the commissioners here that they're gonna want to see some kind of deterrence, possibly some removals of of improvements that were done to wetlands. And that wetlands line to the limited disturbance is basically really where we're going to be having a discussion, okay, and coming to some kind of agreement within that area between those two lines. If you're, I would suggest that it's your intention to keep as much as possible. You probably want to have a plan, okay, with some kind of professional that would be able to kind of give us professional standing on on what's happening, because, because otherwise, we're just gonna, we're gonna come up with something that makes us all happy. But if someone says, well, we do, if if my client does this, there's not going to be an impact. They're going to be restoring what was on the previous plan. I'm just saying that you might gain a little bit more if you come to us with something that's, you know, more more professionally done, if you understand what I'm saying.
I don't. Do you, do you mean getting?
So if you have, no, 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 no. If you want to make a formal application, if if, so if we, if you come into a meeting with us and and we decide, everybody puts in their opinion and we all vote on it, it's kind of like, there's a whole bunch of different options. You could come up to us with a plan and say, we want you to approve this plan. This is what we want. Other, you have a, you have a little more of our influence, our personal influences in the decision, right? Where if you said, this is what I want, this is spelled out on paper, this is the existing condition, this is the proposed condition, you might, you might, you might fare better that way. Just as, you don't have to.
Understood. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
I mean, ultimately, we bought this property because of, partially because of the backyard. I mean, I'm hearing you guys saying that we're gonna lose some or all of our backyard. I mean, this was a tremendously expensive property, as you might imagine. Being that we had no, nothing to do with the creation of this, is there?
Let me stop you right there, so we don't waste any time. Your, that's your, that's your closing attorney, your real estate agent, and anybody else that didn't do their due diligence when you bought the property to see that there was any violations on it or anything that wasn't done according to the original plans. So that really is nothing to do with this commission. So I don't want to get, you know, go out of speech about that.
But you were out here in twenty sixteen.
None of us were out here. We're, we're all volunteers.
Well, someone from your, I, we were, we understood.
Take it up, take it up with town staff, not the commission, please.
And a town staff maybe, member.
Yeah, of course, it's fine. You could, we're a commissioner volunteering our time to try to solve the problem. What happened in two thousand and six is none of our concerns. But what we've seen in the past, what we've seen in the past is that people bought properties and the person that the property owner had trusted to to check, do their due diligence on the property, failed to do it. And they're stuck with inheriting a problem. And that's, that's just the the way it is. Not much that we could say about that, but that's basically what the situation is. We know it's not your fault. We know you didn't do it. But you now own it.
Can I ask you another question? I'm not familiar with this, what this is, but I see this blue line running through the purple zone.
This right here you're talking about?
Aye.
Is that, is that what you're talking about, John?
Exactly is that.
Okay, so based on the records, this area here, the front of it, this, this kind of greenish, that's what was delineated as the wetlands. And then I just did an offset, so it kind of pops out because it gets hard to see a single line. So what they're saying is this area all back here is actually wetlands that was cleared. That's, that's more the big, the big issue is this area is actually what was determined as wetlands.
Right, okay. So then, let me ask you a question. It seems to stop abruptly at our, at our.
Oh, it continues on. I, it continues on. It's just pictorial thing, because it doesn't, it it kind of truncates over here, too. It continues on his property. Trust me.
His property is much like ours and actually has a pool back there. So do we need to get him involved as well?
I will look at it. That, that means you're saying.
That brought this problem on our heads.
I will take a look at it and look at the property next door.
Please, I'd like to understand why his property is okay to be cleared, but why ours is not, you know?
And and also, should we do our own search or with the building department as far as permits, look back at our paperwork and that kind of thing?
Definitely, you can take a look. I did talk to the building department, trying to find out, and, you know, I was being told, no, they didn't have anything. And I believe the reason the building department doesn't have the wall is because it's under the height that would trigger a building permit. And then, and so I went to see if zoning had any, anything, and we were coming up empty handed on it for zoning. A lot of times people don't realize, like, they'll put a shed up in the yard thinking, well, I'm just putting a shed up, but really, they need to have a permit to put a shed up. So whether this kind of fell under that, I don't know.
Okay.
Do all the digging you can. It's only gonna, it's only gonna help. Now, just so you understand, that yellow line on the path, that's a limited disturbance. So when this developer who built this road, when he went out and got all these individual lots approved for construction, that was, that's part of the record, that yellow line. So so anything beyond it technically is a violation of the permit. Right? Okay, now, not to say that a homeowner can't go and get an application and do something beyond that limited disturbance. You could, you could make an app, you, if you hadn't, if nothing had been done here, you could have come to us with an application and say, this is what we want to create in our backyard. And that's why I was telling you you may want to actually do a formal application, because maybe we could let, I'm saying maybe, we could let you extend your yard, you know, at the elevation is now, you know, within that, you know, past that limited disturbance. We have a right to grant you uses anywhere in the upland review area for a hundred feet of your wetlands.
So are there like instructions on how we would come up with a plan on your?
You can speak to Denise about that.
Yeah.
You could do it. Like I said, you could present a plan by yourself or you could hire a professional, one or the other. We don't require either one for this. It's whatever you choose to do, but I'm saying you have options. You ha, it has to go through the the formal process. So you have, you have an option to come up to us with a plan and what you want to do in that, that upland review area, noting that we're going to want you to restore the wetlands area. And you might actually get something out of this that 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 is good for you. You know, it's not necessarily a negative thing all the time. So so that's why I just want to make sure. I was just trying to get at before, but sometimes I'm tired. I don't see it.
You had mentioned something about a hundred feet past the something disturbance. Can you elaborate on that?
Okay, so this line here is what, it was delineated as a wetlands. So anything a hundred feet, so this red line here was the hundred foot offset. So this, so anything in this area here is considered regulated area. Doesn't, and like you said, like Keith reiterated, it doesn't mean you can't do anything in it. It just means you have to get permission because it's a regulated area to a wetland.
Okay.
And let me bring up one thing that I just noticed on this plan that I mentioned earlier, so I correct myself. The the two galleries in the whatever color that is, those are the reserves, so not being used right now. Those are there so that if your septic system fails, the two closest to the house, that you go and you have a, a spare place to replace your septic. So you may not have a problem now if they cut the grade. But if you ever had to later on, then you might have a problem. Because those two galleries aren't being used. They're just a location for the next set, if you ever had to get them replaced.
So if we had.
I didn't, I didn't notice that till just now. There's no, there's no green line showing a pipe going to those. Those are your reserve area.
And and so it with, you know, reserve or whatever, for septic is you want untouched. You, you don't want altered soil, so you don't want something that was filled in or cut, which is why Keith had said he was concerned because we had a wall there.
Yeah, and the other thing, what I, the re, another thing you might want to really consider in this process is that if you were to come up with some kind of alternate plan to bring that reserve area, if it's not, if it's not up to proper design code to make that part of your plan, because if you have a failure and the health department comes out and says, we can't, we can't permit this replacement in this area because the soil's been disturbed, then you're coming back to us again. So I would keep that inclusive of your design to make sure the proper grading is done around that septic system. Because you can't have a septic system behind a wall like that.
Yeah, I don't understand any of it.
We'll, we'll talk and I will help you.
Explain a little bit farther.
Too, you know, which. Yeah.
All right.
I will call you tomorrow to try to set up a time and a day that works, so I could visit. I assume you'd want to be there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll set something up.
Okay, that sounds good.
Are we all good commissioners? We're gonna see them again? All right, great. Thank you for coming in.
Hey, I appreciate your comments and thanks for the advice.
Thanks for your time. Have a nice evening.
Night.
Take care.
All right, number eight, remediation submissions, IWR twenty twenty dash zero two, two twenty four Guinea Road. This is tabled?
Yes, this is tabled.
Tabled. IWR twenty twenty one dash zero two, one eighteen Elm Street, unapproved clearing beyond posted upland review area.
Okay, this one, this one, you have my review comments and you should have a package. I don't see him online, but if we want to discuss it, we're gonna discuss it.
Let's discuss it.
So this was the one that you had mentioned to the property owner. He could either do it himself. He didn't need an engineering, so obviously he did it himself. And so he submitted the plants that he, the plantings he wanted. And there should be the the drawings as well. He, the Xerox of the approved three lot subdivision was included. And then he seemed to blow up the, thank you, Donna, that's why I was, he blew up the area where in that he disturbed and put, thank you. He put his plants down as to what he was proposing, so it correlates with his planting list. Like I said, you have my review comments as well on that one.
Seeing it now. I want you for the record, just.
This one, okay, this was the one where there is no, this is approved lot. It's known as one eighteen Elm Street. There's a, there's a gravel driveway that kind of comes back and hits this existing shed, which is supposed to be only used for storage. There is no house on the lot yet. We have our wetlands markers and he cut down and cleared pile of wood and everything's right beyond where the markers were and it was, there's seed was, grass was planted back here, right by the, the body of water in the back.
Okay, so in his submission, do you feel that he, that he, you know, properly submitted this plan?
Well, I don't feel, I, I mean, I went out there after the submission again and I walked it. And I told him he needs to get his boat out of the upland review area. All the wood storage is still there. He needs to get all of that out of the upland review area. Because it's still there.
So nothing is, nothing has got, it hasn't gotten better, hasn't gotten worse?
It hasn't gotten better. I, well, I guess you could say it's gotten better in the sense some of the wood is stockpiled now and a nice area, but it's still in the upland review area. So you don't quite have the piles. Now you have a, you have a, a, a nice pile instead of several disorganized piles.
So, so he's keeping an area here, looks like that's going to remain grass, correct?
Yeah, and that's grassed right down to the, the water line. And also, so you know, this is also a flood plain back here.
Okay, but he hasn't added or taken anything away, right? As far as volume?
I mean, there's still some piles of wood back here as well.
Piles of wood, right.
Yeah.
Well.
And then, so he's proposed these trees back here. And then more stuff up here.
Well, let me, I'll poll the commission, see what they think about this, this plan. Starting with Commissioner Spence.
I remember seeing this lot before it went anywhere, and there was a really nice buffer along the waterfront. It was thick. You couldn't even see the water because it was so, it was so well vegetated. And now it appears that there's nothing. And he isn't proposing to put anything more in. We need some kind of a buffer, at least for some of it. I mean, I can see leaving a pathway so you can get down to the water's edge and fish once in a while or something like that. But to to denude the whole thing is really not a good idea. is really, um, not a good idea. And these.
Go ahead. I'll, I'll let you check that for you, Don. Finish.
Oh, okay. Um, and it looks like the, the plantings that he put along the sides of his property are really more ornamental than anything else. Um, I mean, I, that, I have no problem with the, with the, the fruit. That's fine. But I would like to see personally, I would like to see much more of a substantial buffer for at least most of the area um, along the wetland edge. There's nothing and grass is not a good idea.
Uh, part of a discussion I wanted to bring up later, if we have the time, happened to be one ten Elm Street, which is right next door.
Okay.
Um, I've got pictures of that one because they want to remove some of the invasive stuff that's along that water's edge. And so these photos kind of show a little bit that might, you know, help or maybe not, I don't know. In terms of what you were just saying. So I'm just giving you a heads up because they want to do it next door. So I don't know whether he removed the buffer or it was done when it was being developed because even the photos I have of the pricker and the monk weed, it's not thick.
Not thick, huh?
No.
Ross, do you remember this?
I, I remember the property. Yes, you and I walked it.
And but do you remember it being thick along the water? I didn't remember being able to see the water's edge.
Um, there was a property next door that we walked too, wasn't there? Was it just that?
Property, but I don't think we even be down that far.
Or it has an existing house on it and then the very structures now over by behind one oh four where they did the compensatory, um, oh my God, compensatory storage. Um, it's very dense back there. So I don't know if maybe more there was dense than over behind where one had it. I don't know.
I remember it being pretty scrubby right across those properties.
Okay.
It's before me, so I, I can't, I can't answer. I could only go by the photos I found, so.
Did you, did you look at the potometry and see if there was any historical data?
I didn't go far back on this at the time. No.
I didn't think about doing it yet either. So.
Yeah.
But, um.
I figured we had enough discussion going on this with, even without that.
Okay, okay. And my only other comment was that the Pinkster Bloom, I looked that up and it sounds like a pretty nice tree, but it doesn't like full sun. Uh, so it will not do well. It's likely to get scorched. But that's just an aside for his landscaper. So those are kind of my comments until I hear what other people have to say, which might prompt something else.
Right. Sounds good. Thank you, Commissioner Spence. Commissioner Stewart.
Um, I'm going to agree with Lois. Um, I'm also going to say that this guy is certainly not a landscape architect.
Are you sure about that?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. And then the grapes.
Yeah.
I'm assuming you need an arbor to grow grapes. They're not going to do well in the ground. So it looks to me like he's trying to like, you know.
All right.
So there you go. There were my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. Commissioner Masrako. Uh, sorry, I'll go Fisher Gingrich after. He's spoke before.
Um, I'm looking through my paperwork. I can't find this. Can you tell me, does anybody know what type of variety of dogwood?
Um, hold on one sec. I have it. Uh, let me just move this. Oh, I can't move this. Help. I don't have it. Donna, can you move that one top there? Thank you. Oh, it doesn't say. It just says dogwood. He didn't give a species of dogwood.
Yeah, it just says dogwood.
Yeah, I thought, I thought maybe it had a species next to it. Sorry.
Should have something there, you know?
Cause there's so many varieties of dogwoods, so.
Yeah. Um, I mean, if they take off, I think they could be pretty. They are an understory plant. Um, they'll do good in both sunny and shady conditions. Pinkster Bloom I have never heard of.
I looked up, I had to look up some of those myself because I had never heard of. It is on our plant list that's on the, the site that we got from, uh, state of Connecticut, so.
If he's going to access this shed that he has back there, whatever you call it, log cabin, I mean.
It, it is a log cabin, yeah.
I mean, he's got raspberries. You can't walk through raspberries. You'll wind up in the hospital.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. When I was looking up how they grow, I mean, it says that they need well drained sandy, sandy type soil and full sun. And yet it's all rocky where he's looking at putting it. So I was just like, I don't think any of that's going to live. But that's not my.
I've got raspberries on my property and they're, they're living in some pretty rocky, bony soil.
Okay.
Whatever variety he's choosing, but that's, that's about it for me.
Well, do you want more detail on the types of, uh?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, it could spec out. I want to just point out that it does say that, uh, the grapes are going to be grown on posts. Right on the right side of the script.
Right, you're right.
Um, so otherwise I take over the ground, but, uh, I'm, Chris Masrako, was there anything else?
Um, no, that's all.
Okay, Commissioner Gingrich.
Um, I want more trees. I don't understand. He's got very little on two maples and two willows and two dogwoods. All right. But I, I, the rest of the berries and stuff like that, that's, that's ornament, that's ornamentation. That's, that unless he wants to become a farmer, he really wants to grow a blueberry field or raspberry field or something, but I don't know. This doesn't, this doesn't wash really well.
Okay, um, is that it, Commissioner Gingrich?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Hall.
Well, I think it's a, a pretty good amateur first draft. Very preliminary. Uh, I think he needs some help and guidance on this. Uh, and, and probably that would mean getting him in front of us and getting, asking some questions. It looks like he's pretty proficient at cut and paste and hope to get by with it.
Bless you.
I don't think that worked though. So I think, I think it needs more work and we need, he needs to come and talk to us.
Is that it, Chris Hall?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. All right. Uh, I am a little disappointed that he's not here tonight. Um.
I got my, he got my comments and I told him that we was on the agenda tonight. I, I don't know what else I was.
Yeah, and he didn't respond at all.
No.
Okay. Well, my thoughts here are someone had mentioned about having a path right to the water's edge. I think that's completely reasonable. Um, I know that we've had other applications, similar situation. Um, but I do think we need a full physical barrier at the, what line are we talking about? I don't want us to misspeak. Is it the floodline or the wetlands line or the uproot, uh, review area? Which one is it?
Here's the wet ones, the, oh my gosh.
Line.
The well is line. Um, the flood line is this line up here.
Yeah. Then you got the limited disturbance.
Hundred foot, which is where the limited disturbance is.
So it's a, it's a building lot, correct? Approved building lot.
Yeah, so the building.
Limited, with a filed limit of disturbance.
Yep.
I'd like to see a physical barrier on that limited disturbance.
So you want a physical barrier up here?
Yes. So that means no more lawn mowers, uh, you know, any type of equipment, no piles of wood transferred in and out.
So you're saying get rid of this grass as well?
No, no, I'm not saying get rid of the grass. I think he should continue to plant it, right? Well, I'm not going to speak for the commission on the grass part of it. If you want to allow them to bring a small push mower to cut some areas, if you want to. I don't have a problem with that. He's going to have to have a gate, a three foot gate. You know, you could get, you know, but generally speaking, I would rather see the whole thing go to wetlands mixture. And then, you know, allow them to use it, but not violate it. So I'm not going to speak with you. There's enough comments on the trees and the plants. As far as he's leaving grass, I'd say he puts the meadow mix or whatever the case, the wetlands mix in there. Um, and again, we're trying to naturalize it, but he also has, it's his property. So he's built to walk around. Then he should be able to have a path down to the water, you know, even, you know, a small little area. If you wanted to put a chair and listen to the babbling brook, you know.
He's got a pad here and that puts chairs here. Although he did have some chairs back here too. You're right.
Yeah, but he may want to go fishing and sit down. I mean, the guy could use it. He could, he can travel on his land. But clearly he went back there and he cleared it. So because of what he did, I think a physical barrier should be at the limited disturbance. Unless, unless he comes up with something else. But right now, he basically gave us a plan and he's not here to even explain it or discuss it. And there's nothing in here that says, he's not, is he showing wetlands markers?
They're already on there. That's how the, these marks right here.
Already there from the, from the development.
The developer. And that's how we knew. I had the photo originally where it had this marker and a pile of wood.
So again, apparently the guy can't, I'm not, uh, but, okay, so there's a marker there that, that didn't communicate properly. So.
Apparently wetlands do not, you know, town and row wetlands or whatever.
That's why I said in the past, we've required a physical barrier. I mean, obviously if his cabin gets to stay, is that the deal long-term?
Yeah, but it, it was listed as it's only for storage, for storage purposes only. It appears it may be lived in right now. I don't know.
I'm going to throw out, you got the two wetlands markers. All three have to stay, but if you went a straight line across the property, it's almost perpendicular, physical barrier. Just me, that's just my suggestion. You follow what I mean? If you want to move the thing across? So you have the, that one, wait, is that your mouse? That one, continuing left in a straight line.
Continue to go straight across this way?
Yes, physical barrier on that line.
Okay, he's got his, all his wood, he's got a big pile of wood stored here, so.
That would be, it'd be, she's got to move, got to move according to our, our regulations.
Right.
Thing, the physical barrier right there because you can't, I wouldn't make them put a fence to go to his, his thing on the other side and cut them off. Right? To get to it, to his storage cabin. So yes, he still, is, is still to get compli- to come into compliance with us. He still has to move everything beyond the thing, but the physical barrier as a deterrent. That's my suggestion. That's all. But obviously we all have some, you know, he, he made, he took the big leap. He, he drew a plan. We have all the questions for him. Next thing he needs to do is come back to us and just talk, talk to us like everybody has said. But now he's got, at least he got some feedback. At least we honored him to give him some feedback to come back with.
I'll provide the feedback to him and I'll tell him we, that he needs to be at the next meeting.
All right. So we are just tabling this, correct? Is that how we call it?
I guess that's what we would be doing. Yeah.
Tabling IWR 2021 zero two to the next meeting. You're, all right, now we're on other bond release reduction reports. None. Sorry, what?
Um, I had.
Oh, you said next door.
Yeah, yeah. I have, um, so where is it? Next door. This is what he wrote to me and I, and he sent pictures. And he said, I would like to cut the pricker bushes and Japanese knotweed along the water and around the evergreen trees. I would not be removing any trees. I would like to also clean the dead branches and trees from the, I think he meant L I, uh, the L, L I D. He said lard to water. So I think he meant L I D to water. And then, yeah. And then he attached a bunch of photos so that you could see his property and what he's talking about. And I told him that I would, you know, try to bring it up tonight or, you know, it might not be till another week. He's, he said he can't attend Wednesday night meetings, so he left it to me.
Sounds like an agent approval.
Pardon?
Sounds like an agent approval for, I mean, he's just trying to remove invasives, right?
Well, yeah, but sometimes permitted use as a right allows us to, um, you know, fix, um, you know, dead limbs or things like that. If it's invasive, it might be able to go into that. But my concern more was because we're in a floodplain, I didn't want to, I, I felt it should be brought up to you to get some sort of input because I'm not sure with the floodplain issue and, and whatnot, whether.
He's not going to be bringing equipment in there, is he?
I don't know how he's going to take it out, but the thing is if he takes it out, you know, he, now he's opening up right to the water's edge. And we have a guy next door who's in for violation.
Oh, this is tricky.
That's, yeah. And so I didn't know if I was going to talk about this tonight because if the other guy was still on, I didn't want to have both, you know?
The guy, he's got to make a presence. He's got to make an appearance. Or he has to, I would say, I would rec- I'm again recommending.
No, that's.
He makes an appearance or he has a professional or somebody making appearance on his behalf.
Okay.
We can't, I don't think you could represent him in our meeting for this particular thing. To be fair, especially to what we're doing with the, what's going on with the neighbor.
Right. And I told him, I said, I could tell you what's going on, but I can't, I, I don't know if I'll have an answer.
He says he has the owner's represent, representative. What, what about, what's he want to do with it after he clears it? He's going to just, he's just trying to like cut it down? So it grows back? Is he trying to change the actual species that's living there?
No, I, you want to cut it down and then it's going to open up to the lake, basically.
You want to put grass? Is he talking about like, I'm just going to, he's going to weed whack it down and then three years later he's going to weed whack it again? To let it grow back? I mean.
I think however you remove, um, knotweed or the, the prickers, I think he wants to physically yank them out, get rid of them.
Well, if he's going to go, I guess, I want to be, I want to try to be fair. I'm going to throw something out that everybody else can make, but if you're going to go in there with equipment, he's got to have a full application.
Yeah, I don't know how he planned on removing. So that's a good thing. You're right.
You know, if, if there's a thing where he's got to cut some stuff down, treat this or that, I think that could, like someone mentioned, it could be an agent approval if he's going to go in there literally by hand. Okay. But if you're going to disturb beyond the limited disturbance with more than his two feet, I think he has to have a full application in front of us.
Yep, got it. Cause.
That's my opinion. So I want, I don't want to speak for everybody. I'm just throwing that out there. If anybody else agrees, disagrees, please.
I agree with that.
I do too.
Everybody?
No way to get standardized.
I told him it wasn't an easy thing, you know, just asking me, it's not going to happen, so.
We're all good? All right. So that's what we'll do. You're going to?
I'll talk to him. Yep. Not a problem. I think the reason he's asking is also because there, the house on that property is, is under construction now. So.
Oh, the one that he, that we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
All right. Now we can move on?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, nothing wrong with that. All right. So, uh, we're not other nine bond release reduction report none, time extension is none. Uh, discussion of one sixty three Barn Hill, the nursery is going to be.
It's gone. Nope, it's gone. He's not going to, um, they're not going to do the planting or harvesting or anything, so.
Huh, interesting. I'd be curious to know though, because it was kind of like a, an unknown thing, like kind of like stuck there with the information, if that was the actual determination by them that it's actually not within their rights.
I think because there was so much going back and forth and it wasn't, didn't seem like it was going to be an easy thing. He, they, they've decided they just want to kind of clear some of the, you know, the downed trees or any of the, um, woody stuff and not do any planting or removal or anything like that. So.
We don't need anything else to do.
No, you know, beautify it.
Yep, of course. All right. So after deliberation session, no public input. A twelve derision completed hearings behind this agenda as determined by the commission. Uh, IWC twenty twenty one dash zero three, eight Crownview Drive, new home reconstruction associated site improvements, pool and pool house draft approval provided. I'll be honest, I didn't get a chance to read it.
Um, actually it's, it's really good. Um, I felt it was. There was only one little, uh, oh, first of all, I guess I have to move to approve with some minor changes.
Motion to approve the draft, uh, minor changes, second by commission, I'm sorry, motion by commission. Motion to approve the draft, uh, minor changes, second by commission, I'm sorry, motion by Commissioner Spence, second by Commissioner Gingras.
All right, discussion. Um, the only thing I would add to it was on page two, A one E. Uh, it says plans to show wetland flagged locations. I'm just being a real, real, um, detail thing here. Detail on plans to show the wetland flag locations. And I think that was it.
All right.
Yeah, that's all I found. I don't know if anybody else found anything, but other than, other than that, looks great.
We're good?
Did you get that changed Denise and Donna? Good.
I, yeah, I don't have the, the thing in front of me, but I wrote what you said.
All right, Donna has it.
All in favor? Uh, is that Commissioner Mastoraco, were you in favor?
I, I wasn't here last week, it was two weeks ago. Was that covered then?
Oh, yeah, if you weren't on the, if you weren't for the hearing then. Um, so, uh, motion passes with abstention from, I'm assuming abstention from Commissioner Mastoraco. Yeah, all in favor other than Commissioner Mastoraco who was staying? All right, motion passes, great, moving along. I W C agent activity reports, uh, agent approvals. Let's start with the pastors walk one.
Um, I A A twenty twenty-one fifteen fifty-four pastors walk, um, a minor addition to the home and septic tank relocation in the upland review area.
Okay, you want to just read off the rest of them?
Sure. I, I A A twenty twenty-one dash twelve, one oh four Forest Street, installation of fifteen foot by twenty-six foot above ground pool with surrounding deck. I A A twenty twenty-one thirteen, nine eighty-seven Monroe Turnpike, installation of eighteen foot by thirty-three foot above ground pool. I A A twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, which is ninety-four cent, minor, minor grading within upland review area.
All right. And then why don't you just knock off fourteen, while you're.
Um, I P U twenty eighteen dash O one, Department of Public Works, road repair, replacement and our general maintenance inland wetlands regulation, section four point two C expiration three twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. All right, enforcement deliberation, uh, it looks like we have nothing at all. So we're on to general discussion, the minutes of March tenth, twenty twenty-one. Let's approve some minutes.
Finally got March tenth done. Ah, okay, um, Donna, you ready and Denise? Donna, I guess.
Hold on one sec.
Okay.
I got one too, so.
Okay, go ahead, Lois.
All right, on page two of five, under ten time extension, the second paragraph, we're starting with Chairman, Chairman Romano, uh, that was a hanging sentence. It just said, um, I just figured, Miss, Miss Hallstead advised that she did not know would be what I would put there.
Oh, yeah, I was advised that she was not sure of the.
Yeah, exactly. And I listened to the recording and it really wasn't anything more specific than that. You really just didn't know. So, okay, two, uh, three paragraphs later. Um, now you know it, that's, that's minor. All right, the paragraph up from the bottom, same page, starting with Com- Commissioner Gingras. End of that sentence, the permit has technically lapsed and has only been extended due to COVID. I just thought we needed to throw that in there for a little clarification. That is, that's it. So move to approve with changes.
Second, motion to approve the minutes with changes for Commissioner Spence, second by Commissioner Gingras. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously.
Um, so Jim, wait a second, that was March tenth, so Jim abstained from that.
Oh, sorry, an abstention from Commissioner Stewart.
And I'm sorry, so it was Lois and Clark? Was this second?
Clark, yes, it was Lois and Clark, yes.
Lois.
Exploring.
Oh, I like it. We're gonna have to use that more often.
Exploring the wetlands of Monroe and, um, our markers.
So now we're on the mi- the minutes of, uh, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, move to approve with some minor changes.
Motion to approve with minor changes from Commissioner Spence.
The changes are page two, halfway down the, the page. Uh, it starts with Commissioner Hall, asked if the easement noted on the plans are proposed. It's just a typo. And that's, I'm not gonna bother with that one. Then on page three, under section eight remediation submissions, third paragraph down, uh, Mr. Solely advised, dot, 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 the beginning of the next sentence is by mimicking the flow of water. That previously ran to this area.
There's a lot to that.
And slow instead of follow.
Oh.
Gotta love order, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Donna, did you get that?
Um, he explained by mimicking the flow of water, the.
That previously ran to this area.
Oh, that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the very bottom of that same page.
Uh-huh.
Um, middle of the first sentence there, Commissioner Spence asked about the wildlife scene in the other vernal pools.
Okay.
And okay, the next page, I had a question, um, on the barn hill. Was it John Bifano or Epifano?
E P I F A N O, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, that's who I thought it was, but I wasn't sure, because she's got the name correctly throughout the entire section.
I, I could verify the spelling, but I don't have it with me here. It's on my work computer.
I will, um, I'll fix that, Lois.
Okay, awesome. Um, the paragraph right below that, that said Chairman Romano asked if any clarification. Oh, there were some, if this didn't quite make sense, so I just stroke, struck it. The second sentence is that Ms. Hallstead deferred to Commissioner Spence. And I asked if any screening would be added to replace the dead trees, and those two didn't seem really to make any sense. So I was just gonna strike that Ms. Hallstead deferred to Commissioner Spence, and the next sentence, which is Commissioner Spence asked if any screening, da, 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 da. Um, just strike those two sentences. And at the end, wait a minute, where does this go? Oh, here we go. The last, same, same paragraph, the last sentence says because of the wetland soils, you, you follow, you see me? You see it? The very last sentence in that, in that same paragraph.
Says Chairman Romano stated that this use would be very destructive to the ground and soils.
Right, but be right before that, insert, before chairman, we, insert, and that certain activities are exempt and not others. So that gets tagged on to the, the previous sentence. Commissioner Spence stated the filling wouldn't be allowed because of the wetland soils. Dot, 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 and all the certain activities are exempt and not others.
All right, Lois, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm so.
You want me to send, how about I just send?
No, no, I, I just say the part because of the wetland soils and you're saying dot, 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 but I.
You're right. I, I, I'm being very weird, so pardon me, my fault. Okay, because of the wetland soils, then we're inserting, and that certain activities are exempt and not others.
Okay, I did get it that time. Thank you.
One more, the next sentence.
Chairman Romano?
Uh, no, after that, the next paragraph, Commissioner referred to the regulations. She stated a permit could be issued. And then we're gonna insert for the non-exempt activities. And the next thing is a little spelling thing. Um, on the top of page five, under five fifty-five Fan Hill Road, Douglas Rich, was that, it's, it's spelled R I C H, but is that correct?
It's not, it's, yeah, that's not.
Just a spelling thing then. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, a motion to second the changes. Second by Commissioner Gingras. All in favor?
Uh. Again, I have to abstain, right?
All right, we have five, five, uh, uh, approvals and one abstention from Commissioner Mastoraco.
Perfect.
All right, and it's approved. Regulation Amendment Committee.
Did everybody review their regulations, changes? He did wave, he did. Did you look, Adam?
I sure, I read every word.
Oh, good for you, BJ. Who else did?
I am not. I apologize, but.
Well, you want to just run through them so we can talk about them, and then maybe we, you don't need to do further perusal, perusal. Um, we can't keep putting this off. These really need to be addressed.
Where was that?
Oh, Donna sent it out as a spec, it was in packet month, a weeks ago, and Donna sent out a special email this week with, with them, um, attached.
Yeah. And I did that because I keep losing them too.
I'm glad you did, because I lost mine also, even though they're on the computer. I've got so many, I've got so many renditions, I never remember which one I got as the right one.
Keep mine in the front of my notebook.
All right. Did you find them, Keith?
No, I did not.
All right, I mean, we can, if you want, I can.
I'll, I'll, I'll listen, I'll be good.
So, uh, regulations to be discussed. In definitions, uh, we wanted to add appropriate professional, uh, the definition, qualified. Oh my gosh. In definitions, add appropriate professional, qualified professional such as a certified professional wetland scientist. Um, it says wetland biologist, cert- certified ecologist or soil scientist, land surveyor, architect and landscape architect licensed by the state of Connecticut or such other qualified persons. Um, and then adding also in the definitions, native plant is a plant that is part of the balance of nature that has developed over hundreds or thousands of years in a particular region or ecosystem in New England. Only plants found in this area before European settlement are considered to be native to New England. And then there were two other, um, renditions of this. It said, or native plants are those that have evolved and adapted to a specific location and have remained genetically unaltered by humans. That's one rendition. And then the next one is, um, for low impact development. Term used to describe a land planning and engineering design approach to manage stormwater runoff as part of a green, part of green infrastructure. Um, low impact development emphasizes conservation and use of onsite natural features to protect water quality. Um, so there's, there's three.
I was gonna say, do you want to discuss some of the mess we go along rather than?
So, um, so appropriate professional. Um, see, I'm having trouble because there's a line through it and I'm not sure. I think you just wanted the addition of a wetland biologist.
No, we don't have a definition of an appropriate professional right now.
Oh, okay, so that one needs to.
But it's used all over the place throughout the regulations, and it really is a good idea to define that. So, um, that's why we did that one.
You don't have my favorite one as appropriate professional.
What's that?
A professional engineer.
You are right.
What do professional engineers know, Jim, you know?
Yeah, I don't know. An architect.
As long as we're not talking about.
Architect is there.
Yeah, but an architect, I don't think is an appropriate professional for anything we do.
Not a, just not an architect, just a plain architect. Landscape architect, okay.
Landscape architect, absolutely. A regular architect, I mean, I, I, I don't think they're an appropriate professional.
Okay, so let's add professional engineer, right? Or do you want to?
You want to. Take an architect, a professional engineer there.
Okay.
I've got licensed engineer.
Well, if you're a professional engineer, you're licensed.
Well, but that's what I wanted to say is, Jim, it should be a licensed engineer, shouldn't it?
Well, it's a licensed professional engineer.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry for the, all, for the oversight.
No.
We take exception, right, Jim?
Yeah, exactly. I was gonna just figure we were the other qualified person.
We're the other, that's right, we're the other.
Okay. So we leave that definition, so it would read appropriate professional, qualified professional such as a certified professional wetland scientist, a wetland biologist, certified ecologist or soil scientist, land surveyor, licensed professional engineer, landscape architect licensed by the state of Connecticut or such other qualified person.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right. And so, one that I just printed out is not the right one either. I don't have native plant on mine. Man.
Okay, so the next two that I have are, it's, there's two definitions for native plant. The first one reads native plant is a plant that is part of the balance of nature that has developed over hundreds or thousands of years in a particular region or ecosystem in New England. Only plants found in this area before European settlement are considered to be native to New England. That's the first definition. The second definition reads native plant are those that have evolved and adapted to a specific location and have remained genetically unaltered by humans.
I think the genetically unaltered is a little, a little strict. Because.
Humans, that's the point, is no cultivars.
Yeah, exactly. Don't we want to have cultivars?
I don't think so, because that's what disrupts.
Someone wants to put in an elm tree, and you're gonna say you can't. Someone wants to put in an elm tree, and you're gonna say you can't have an elm tree. Because, because they're all cultivars now, so that they're less, less likely to, to get killed by that disease.
Well, what about combining the two? Why can't it be one or the other?
You can combine.
That might work. I like the ecological balance thing. I don't have them in front of me. I'm gonna have to go look for them, the two definitions for some reason. I like the fact that, that it evolved with its insect. I don't even know if this is part of it, but it evolved with its insect and its ecology, ecological neighbors, so to speak. They, like I said, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not speaking English.
We, we might need to.
Might need to table this and work on.
But it's all right. One discussion is good with some discussion.
How about everybody else? What do you think?
What you emailed us was one page?
Yes.
Because I don't see where it talks about any, the plants.
That, see, okay, that's the one I printed out today too. That was the one that, that we got today. So you got my problem today, Donna. You don't know. The latest rendition may not be part of it.
All right, well, then let me. Maybe I can recopy it or reprint it out and we can.
I'll find it somewhere. It's in one of my emails too.
Okay, all right.
So that'll be on, on for next time.
Well, next week, or not, not next week, I'm sorry. Two weeks.
You could come next week.
Meetings this month? Because this feels like three meetings this month.
No, no.
So, under correspondence, I didn't send it out to you, but we did get a permit application for the use of pesticides in state waters, and it's the Connecticut Deep Program, and it's the notification. It's for the aquatic pesticide application to Violet Pond in Monroe.
Violet Pond? Which is that one? I'm not familiar with that one.
It's 987 Monroe Turnpike. Violet, just the name of the, I think, the owner of the property. So.
We could still couple up other, the other things on the list. We don't have to bag the whole, we don't have to throw the baby out with the bath floor. On the regulations, that is, just to do one or two more, because if we only do one meeting, we're still gonna be doing this in December.
So we did definitions, right, for.
Yeah, except for native plant.
Or low-impact design.
Or low, yeah.
I actually pulled something up, but it must be something different. I have this. The top line says regulation changes to be discussed, and it says items are priority. It's in green. Is that where we're on?
Yeah, that's one of them.
It's even appropriate professional, but I don't see the native plant part.
Right, that's what, and I have the same problem. That's why we're gonna bag native plant until next time.
Gotcha.
All right.
Upland Review Area. Is that where we're on now?
Yeah, that's a definition also, but it's, all it does is further define another area of Upland Review Area. It's, for some reason, that's the only river in town that did not get added to our list of rivers, of named rivers.
Really?
Farmville. Yeah, we got the, we got the Boys Half River. We've got all kinds of, but not the Farmville.
So 7.1A is just about adding a name of a river to the list?
Sounds good.
Yep. That one's good with everybody?
I'm sorry, that's, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. It's, it's Upland Review Area. These aren't numbered on the side, so I got a little confused. Add Farmville River, so we're all agreeing.
Number B would be.
I was reading, I thought it was part of the one below it. So the next one, 7.1 point A.
Yeah.
So we're good with the Farmville River. Is that done? Okay.
That's an easy one.
Yep.
Donna, you want to read this? You want me to read it?
I, I'm almost a little lost. I apologize. I'm.
That's okay.
Struggling this evening.
That's all right. You want me to read it? I can, I can do.
This is the, yeah, this, I know what this, okay.
This one, this one is one of the, our major, major additions that we need. To add, submissions for remediation shall be on a different form and shall be submitted separately from development applications. However, if the commission finds by majority vote that said remediation is of very minor nature, remediation may be included in the application for development. Development applications and remediation submissions on the same property may be submitted at the same time, but are subject to different timelines and requirements. Does that say what we want it to say?
Yeah.
Yes.
Does it, is it succinct enough that nobody can?
That makes it very clear.
Okay. Because we don't want anybody saying, well, that's not what that says, you know, and.
Lois, you're the English major. Very minor, is that appropriate?
Well. Who do you think wrote it? Um, well, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna strike out that professional engineer now out of the other. The only thing I thought too, when I was reading it. Should it be by majority vote or by a majority vote?
And throughout the, the, the regulations, it says by majority vote, but if you want to put by a majority vote.
Nope, done. I don't want to go back and have to change every single one later on, because.
No, no, it's, it doesn't matter. We can put the A in, or we can leave it out. It says the same thing.
Fine, forgot to mention.
Any other comments?
It's good.
Okay.
7.5, point F. Add a minimum of alternative site plan is considered relative to direct or indirect permanent or temporary impacts.
Right now, it just says relative to impacts. And what we have been told many times, or one of the, the things that the engineers will say, well, there's no direct impact. But that doesn't mean that there isn't going to be long-term impacts or indirect impact. I wish I could come up with an example. For instance, an example of direct impact would be your sticking fill in the wetlands. That's a direct impact. But, an indirect impact could be where you clear all 100 foot of the Upland Review Area, and the whole thing washes into the wetland. That could be an indirect, or it could change the flow of water. That's an indirect impact. That's not, that could be long-term, that you don't see right away. So I figured if you, if we, you know, really. I'm, I'm one of these, I like to pigeonhole it, because the more you more you rope, you give them, the more they strangle us with it.
I, I, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
Okay.
Good, moving along.
All right, wow.
Add to 7.5, point G, point 5. Add bullet point A, soil scientists report shall include sketch of approximate placement of soil types on property.
I'm all for that, because they, they get so vague when they start talking to us. I'm glad you wrote that in there, because, oh yeah, I was out there in the field, and, you know, I got a sample of this and a sample of that, and where did you get the sample? And what, you know, what does it really say?
But, that's what I was aiming for.
All right, we're all good with that? Are we supposed to be individually voting on any of these, or do we vote on all of them at the end or something?
We can vote on them. I mean, we can, I can type them up and.
Oh, get to the actual, you know.
Yeah, and we'll get, we'll do a vote.
On the whole, okay, like the minutes or something, right? Okay. All right, so we're on to 7.6 heading, insert impact between significant and activity.
That was something that Jeff Shamis had recommended, because it, you think about it, a significant activity, that doesn't make sense. It, it could be an activity that creates a significant impact. That makes more sense.
Okay.
But, to me, now I don't know how everybody else feels.
Insert impact being significant, so it's a significant impact activity?
I don't like it. I don't like it. I like significant activity.
Yeah, I think the impact, I mean.
That's what I've always said, I've always heard.
If you're doing something in activity, it's some kind of an impact, or it's like, there was that thing about every action has an equal and opposite reaction, like. I don't know. I mean, I could see where it applies, but I think it's kind of implied.
You don't need it.
Now we have to go up someone else and say whether it's, this activity is an impact, I mean, just assume that all activities are gonna impact something. Doing something, you're impacting something, even if you're planting.
Is there a definition of significant activity?
Yes, that's, that's in the definition. Oh, seven, no, 7.6. I don't have my regs.
Lois, you're supposed to be on the ball here.
Yeah, it's too late for me to be on the ball. I'm tired of being on the ball.
Skipping this one, or what?
Table that one. Either table it or bag it. It's, it's really, like you said, it's, it's not really minor. I mean, it's not really major. Next one, 7.6 point G, point 2. That just, that has to do with inventorying. Wetlands, water courses, and vernal pools. You actually have to have the reg in front of you to make, to see if it makes sense.
Makes sense.
Yep, no brainer.
Okay, so that's good?
Yeah, yep.
Now, there was a time, before most of us are there, I was here, but what was the time where the, the soil scientists and the wetland biologists used to come in with a list? Maybe some of you have run into it, where they said wetland functionality. Jim, I'm sure you know all about this, but it's, it's a classification of the wetlands and the different functions it can perform, and how well it can perform them. And so this was another one of Jeff's recommendations, because he felt that what, it, it sounded, or it made more sense to say wetland function value assessment. You're actually assessing what the wetland can do or does and should do. And as described in the Army Corps of Engineers. That way, it takes away all the subjectivity. It's got a list of criteria that the ACOE has determined. So that was just one of these things, and this is, aligns with the current federal assessment process. So, I didn't really know much about it, but that was, that was a suggestion of Jeff's.
Does, does that come into play when we hear people say it's a low-value wetlands, high-value, right?
Yes.
Do we hear it enough? Why not have it be, you know, part of the regulation?
I don't think it can hurt. Let's put it that way.
I don't think so either.
That sounds good with everybody?
Yep.
All good? All right.
Okay.
That one's going. Two more, three more. Seven dash six dash G dash A, add DEEP report of species involved. And conservation measures proposed if natural diversity database arc bubble, area bubble is onsite or offsite without your proper.
Okay, probably, no, people aren't terribly familiar with this, but the DEEP has created this NDDB, which is a placement of endangered species or threatened species in bubbles. And what they do is they take, when they get a report of an endangered species, they will, they, they know where the exact pinpoint is of where this thing was reported. And what they do is they create a general bubble that goes around it, so that it doesn't pinpoint where a collector could go and pick up this endangered species. So they make it much more broad. Besides, the species don't stay put, they move around. So, what we've run into in the past is that this property here doesn't have an NDD bubble on it. But right next to it, right up to the border, it does have it. And since that bubble is really not a very well-defined and shouldn't be a defined area, this regulation just says that a bubble boundary is within 100 feet of that property line, that that should be reported. It might be one of those things that is too, too specific. It's just one of those things that kind of bothered me, because I always look at the NDDBs every time I with certain areas I know had a lot of the endangered species on them, and you could be right next to a bubble and not know, and they'd be completely destroying the lot, and right next to that bubble.
Is it plant and animal, Lois?
Yeah, it's any, any species that's endangered or threatened.
And is this NDD readily available to everyone?
It is. It's on the DEEP website. All of the engineers are aware of it. And all the wetland biologists, all the professional people are. Maybe a little professional engineers.
Appropriate professionals would know about it. So Lois, this would only come into play for, you know, engineered drawings, right? It wouldn't be like, a homeowner has to draw a plan if they gotta identify these things.
We have nothing to do with that. This would only really be if there was a profession. Usually, it applies to larger-scale
Sounds like.
Developments, and, like, there was a lot of, um, wet mountain area, there were a lot, not anymore, in Pepper Street Development. There were so many bubbles that were completely ignored. And, so that was, that, that's why I stuck that one in there, and I just wanted to.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Yeah, I, I think the section it's going into, that section G, is very appropriate to add that in. Yeah, I'm good with it.
All good? All right. That was good.
If anybody's interested, that endangered species map is on our website, under, in the, in the wetlands website, under useful information. There, so.
It's very interesting too, it really is. And did you know that if you ever see a species that is endangered or threatened, you can report it to the DEEP, and they will record it and put it on the map? If you see a box turtle, for instance, you should report it. Or an eastern ribbon, ribbon snake, and things like that, that these things are all.
Right, the three-toed.
Not if it's on your property, you don't.
That doesn't mean you can't do anything, it just means.
Grab it, you take it, you take it across to your neighbor's property and drop it off there, and then you report it.
All right, let's keep going here so we can get it done. Add 7.6 point P. New resume, resumes of professionals giving testimony shall be provided before or during the hearing to document qualifications for the hearing record.
This is only really if we fear that there's gonna be some kind of legal action taken. And there was a time years ago where everybody had to provide a resume of their qualifications before they could be considered an expert. Now they just have to say they're an expert, and they are labeled as such. So I don't know if, because we've never required resumes from anybody. It seems to me. They usually give a listing of their qualifications, but they haven't provided resumes. But I think this, this grew out of a, of a lawsuit that, um, the, the judges wanted to know the resumes, you know, how could, how, who is providing this testimony, and, and what are their qualifications? But
I don't know, forget it.
It, they could see much
Seems like no 90% of everybody's here.
It's fine with me if we strike it. That's fine.
I just, you know, I understand the reason why it's there, why it's been considered for an addition, but, you know, it already is, you know, and, you know, it, you know, takes time to even just go to each person and have them state their name and where they're from, and I don't know, to have that, you're saying it's a written thing that gets submitted with the application? It's not
No, not with the application. Um, I guess it can come in anytime during the hearing.
Yeah, I, I would say that if it's requested by the commission, I wouldn't require it from everybody all the time. It's too, it'd be, it's another piece of paper we gotta get. We get so many.
Yeah, if we wanna
If we got someone who we've never seen, and, 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 and he doesn't tell us, and he's not saying, "I'm, I'm licensed this," or whatever, he's just going at it, and, and he won't, talks persuade them, well, then I'd say we can ask him for his resume.
How about this, where we say, "Resumes professionals giving testimony may be required, or may be requested by the commission." So that, they know, anybody who knows the application, you know, it's a change of application, they know that that may be required of them. So like, for instance, like, I'm not gonna say that we would have, but let's say like Evan Glass, right? When he was there, he was kind of brought in. I'm not, I wasn't trying to make a joke, seriously, but I'm just saying, like, he was brought in by intervener that I don't think any of us ever dealt with before, but he was known to other people. Wasn't like he was from, like, Mars. But, you could say, you know, "We're not familiar with your work in this town, so to speak. Can you please provide us with some, you know, credentials, whatever?"
I think maybe requested is fine. You just take out, shall be provided, you know, shall be provided, maybe requested. Alright, well, we can request whatever. Maybe we don't even need to put that into this regulation, because we can request anything we want, generally.
Yeah, but I think if you had somebody like with, where they had an attorney, right? Wow, why, you know, what gives you the right to, you know, request this, and, you know, it's in our regulations? You didn't read them? They're not paying you enough money.
Make them read the regulations.
Yeah, read the regulations, then come back. We're tabling this till the next meeting. No, I like it.
I'm just gonna be upset. I wanna know your resume.
It's like Marisa Tomei in, in that, what was that, My Cousin Benny?
Yep, yep.
"How are you a mechanic, professional mechanic? Well, let me tell you about this Corvette thing, whatever it was, I don't know." Alright, so the last one, 10 dash 1 dash E, "Remove clause, the POCD plan of conservation well is a guidance diagram of P and Z, and shall have no bearing on wetland decision." That's
That would, that's, the only thing that is, that the commission may consider, um, it's under consideration for decision. And it lists, lists a bunch of people that we can listen to, and, or that we should use as our guidance, and POCD is in there as one of the things that we could consider. But it really shouldn't be anything that has anything to do with us. And that's why that little italicized area was my little commentary on it as to why it should be removed, because
So it's in, you're saying it's in there now?
Mm-hmm. It's in there now, yeah.
But it's
And it should be taken out. That's all.
But the, but this law, so it's not this actual italicized, that sentence is the one that's in there?
No, no, that's my, that's my little commentary.
Oh, okay, remove clause, okay. Oh, I'm saying, you're saying 101, that is the clause. You're saying remove tenant entire, in its entirety.
Let's remove it.
Okay, gotcha.
I, I think it should stay.
So that's, that's housekeeping.
Well, I mean, if, if the town, if the town has decided that, that, that this area needs, should be developed, or shouldn't be developed, or should be going come housing, or whatever, and someone wants to do something that, that obtains those goals, right?
That's not, no, that's not the way the statute's set up, Jim. We are not supposed to have to pay any attention to that.
Yeah, we can't make a decision based on things that are
But it could, it could, it could help you make a decision.
I sued the town of trouble in one, because the CBA made a P and Z decision against me.
Yeah, but you're not using that as, you're not using that as the sole thing. You're just using it as a piece of information.
Well, we stuck it in there.
Basically, you're saying, basically, you're saying you don't want to even hear about what the POCD says.
Right.
Well, for, well, but other thing, if these people want to put an application in to us, on something that's not even following our POCD, they're just wasting their time, right, and money. That's not likely to happen. The developer, oh, yeah, sure, I think we'll be able to go in and change appeal. Let's just go to wetlands anyways. Not likely.
See, it wasn't in there to start with. We stuck it in there 10 years ago when I was working on the POCD, and thought it should have more bearing on what we did. But then I realized with time and with classes, that, that the state does not want us to use that as a, um, as criteria for. We're supposed to work on the wetlands side of things, the environmental side of things. What the town wants to do with a piece of property is really immaterial, because it still has to conform to what we are being directed to do by the state. So that's why I'm suggesting we take it out. Nobody else has it in, and no other town has it in there.
Could open us up to liability, too, right?
Yeah, probably. So, I'm thinking we should get it out of there.
Get it out.
Get it out.
Out. Come on, Jim.
Whatever.
Twisted your arm.
9:40, 9:40, you guys can have anything you want right now.
Alright.
Are we done?
Are we done?
But that'll be next time.
Yep, so, uh, that was it for Regulation Amendment Committee, which is all of us, apparently.
Yes.
Um, Public Outreach Committee.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right. Correspondence is done.
You know what, I, can I just throw in one thing? I was actually thinking, I don't know how far I'm gonna get with this, but I was actually thinking about writing an article for the Monroe Sun to, um, explain to people why we ask for native plants. And that would be a public education thing. Um, because I have heard, what's the big deal about native plants? And if they understood what the big deal was, maybe, uh, we wouldn't get so much pushback.
That they planted, and they're like, "Oh, my God, this is growing too, too much. Uh, uh, where does bamboo grow now? Uh, bamboo's not supposed to be grown here in, in New England."
Exactly.
So, just to go over the pending items, IWV 20 dash 19 dash 16, IV design net, dash 9 dash 15, 43 Birds Eye, 138 Monroe Turnpike, doesn't still hanging out there. Undone.
Yep.
So, I make a motion, we close the meeting.
We got a motion by, from, got a second by Fisher Hall, I think.
Yep.
All favor.
Oh!
Motion passed unanimously. This meeting is closed at 9:42 PM.